Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Board of Commissioners' meeting for September 18th, 2019. The year is just flying by. Our inspirational word for the day: Warn a divisive person once, and then warn him a second time; after that, have nothing to do with him.
Whoa.
Wow.
That's pretty stuff.
Good morning. Today, we have a three-month-old black lab mix in kennel number 30. He's available today. We have 20 other dogs in the kennel, so if this isn't your style of dog, come on down. Thank you.
He's cute. Little like Pauls.
Yeah. Big Pauls. He's gonna be a big boy.
We have a lot of agenda items. We're gonna be moving things around just a little bit. If it's okay with the Board, I think at this point what I'd like to do is see if we could jump to item number 11, since we have government officials here today who need to get back to their offices, and we don't want to be ringing up attorney bills by having any attorneys sitting in the room for a long period of time. So, Madam Clerk, if you...
You're picking on the attorneys.
Yeah, I know. Picking on the attorneys. We need to have them, though, right? So, what was it I read online recently? Somebody posted a joke about it. They asked the genie for one wish, and the genie said, "What would it be?", and the person said, "I'd like to have no attorneys in the world." And, of course, the genie had said you get three wishes. And so, genie said, "That's all taken care of." And the person said, "Now, I'd like to make my second wish." And they said, "That's it. No more wishes for you." And the person said, "But I thought I got three wishes." And then the response was, "Sue me."
Sue me.
So... No attorneys, right? So, there you go. Yeah. So, we'll move to item 11. Madam Clerk?
A decision on annexation petition for approximately 50.90 acres from the townships of Eden and Grafton to the village of Grafton in accordance with the ORC 709.14 and 709.16, muni-owned mayor... I always screw this up. DeFensenzow, agent.
I would make the motion to take action.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Jury, is there anything we need to discuss about this?
Grafton wanted to make some...
Anything that Grafton would like to say at this time?
No.
Nothing?
There is an appeal going, but no stay has been granted, so I believe our obligation is to proceed.
This is one of the expedited annexations? Okay.
Is this the one that went to court?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it went to court, and the court denied the actions to rule that the old judgment entry precluded this annexation. So, that, I guess it was a motion that they filed. So, those were all dismissed, but they have now appealed that. But they asked both the local judge and the Court of Appeals for a stay so that the Court of Commissioners could not proceed, and neither one of those courts have granted a stay. So, it's my opinion, we're obligated under the law to proceed.
Okay.
And pretty much with the way the law states, as long as everything's in order, we're supposed to approve the annexation.
Yep.
Just to clarify, it's the muni-owned annexation, not expedited. There is a difference.
Muni-owned. Okay.
Anything further? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for being here this morning. You're more than welcome to stay. We just thought we'd help you out with that one early, so you can get back to work if you needed to. Madam Clerk, we have a proclamation this morning?
To proclaim, September is Recovery and Suicide Prevention Month.
Okay. Elaine, I know you're with us this morning. If you'd come forward to, I guess, choose the podium of your choice, I think this one over here probably with our new cameras may work a little bit better for you right now. We do have a proclamation here from the Board of Commissioners in the matter of proclaiming September as Recovery and Suicide Prevention Month in Lorraine County. If you want to start with any thoughts, and then we can read some portions of this for you.
Well, I'll be brief, because we'll be up here a little, a few times. But, you know, this month is really to acknowledge the increase in suicide deaths that are occurring across the nation, in Ohio as well as in Lorraine. We're above the 60s in our marks of suicide deaths. So, this month to call attention about how we work together to prevent and engage people to get help through every way. There are opportunities through the Mental Health Addiction and Recovery Services Board. There are quick programs, 90-minute question, persuade, refer, that we can connect people. There's deeper, there's mental health first aid. We, as a community, really need to dig into this with our children, identifying, you know, if they're anxious, depressed, how we can work with that. So, this month is really calling attention to suicide awareness, as well as Recovery Month, Recovery from Addiction. This is the 30th Annual National Recovery Month, so we want to, you know, instead of kind of together, you know, we could pull together. Overdoses are still happening. We're over, it was 56 overdose deaths by the end of July, according to the coroner. Although, that trend is down, but there have been a few more. They spike. The last month, there were like four or five in a row. And so, if you just watch the news, a big batch of fentanyl came across the border from Caihoga. So, really, you know, so this month is a time for reflection and celebration, understanding suicides, how we can all become aware, and what we can each do about that. Next Saturday, there are two opportunities. There's a Suicide Awareness Walk at Lakeview Park. Registration opens at 11:00, and it starts at noon. Earlier that day is the 14th Annual Voices for Recovery Run Walk, so...
Yeah, it's just alarming when you hear the stories in the community. I was speaking with somebody recently who sat at a coworker, you know, was in the office having just normal day conversations. Coworker said they were going to lunch and never came back, and committed suicide.
Right. I mean, any death is a death that we need to pay attention to, and all of us as citizens, just to pay attention to people we know and understand, you know, how we can get involved to get them help. There are, you know, the crisis hotline is available, there's suicide prevention materials. We've put out so much material about the crisis hotline and the 24/7 helpline for people to use those numbers and call and get help.
Then we hear the awful stories of those battling addiction who just lose faith and lose hope, and actually are sometimes angry when they're brought back.
I've said before that any, you know, one time is an accidental overdose. After that, if you're overdosing more than once, I consider that suicidal. And when they are using in the deep, deep into their addiction, they get very suicidal. They don't, really don't care whether they live or die, so...
Both mental illness and addiction, you know, attack the brain, they're brain diseases, and so their brain is changed. And so, the way they operate, the way they act is totally controlled now by the substance, and they often feel senseless and hopeless. Just last night, we had the improbable players up here at Gates Auditorium, you know, and they were talking about the different pathways of leading to addiction, and how suicide was connected, or depression and anxiety. So, absolutely, we need to treat the whole person. That is one of two priorities on the county's health improvement plan, to address substance abuse and mental health issues, and really dig into reducing overdose deaths and suicide. And our board, Mental Health Addiction and Recovery, has been named the leads to facilitate all of the community partners to come together to figure that out for the improvement of Lorraine County's health.
And then for children, you know, it used to be, before social media, the only time kids could bully other kids would be on the playground or at lunch, and now they can pretty much bully them all day, all night, if they're on the internet and on Facebook, you know, so, or on their phone, if they have phones. It's very concerning.
It's a new social world where young people are getting to... I am proud to say that Amherst School District has been named one of 35 districts in the nation to pilot the mental health youth first aid curriculum throughout their district, and that, that's gonna be really amazing to spread that through. The schools have received a significant amount of wellness and student success dollars, and we're meeting with the superintendents and the schools to help address the mental health issues that every student faces. I mean, you know, jumping from junior high to high school is a risk factor. You know, peers, a risk factor, conflict at home, risk factors. So, yeah, digging into the whole issue in our communities with friends and with families as we've got to prevent, identify early if we can, and treat, and provide opportunities for recovery in our communities as well.
Elaine, last year, I think it was probably November, Claire could probably confirm the, through the Mental Health Board, they had the identifying risk factors in the workplace. And I thought that was effective training, and I would hope that we're gonna see more of those training environments where folks in the community can attend. I attended as just a local employer, identifying some of the risk factors and learning how to confront and ask those tough questions. And there were some, a couple of eye-opening statistics in there that led way to, I think, employers, coworkers, having a greater awareness of what might be a problem when typically you, you might have just said, "Oh, it's none of my business." So, I hope you're gonna have more of those training programs, as well as the statistic back then was, isn't it, middle-aged adult men are still our highest risk factor? Am I correct on that, Claire?
Yeah, you need to come up to a podium, Claire.
We know that it's always tragic, and children tend to get the greatest impact, make the greatest impact when it's a child, but isn't it, we're still looking at middle-aged men?
Yeah, so we tend to hear a lot more about it in the media and coverage and things like that when it's a young person who dies by suicide. The group of people in the United States who's most at risk from dying by suicide is typically middle-aged white men, and the middle-aged factor is 45 to 65. Sometimes that's grouped to working-age men, 35 to 65. There are a lot of different risk factors that are particular to each group, but the fact of the matter is that suicide is, it doesn't discriminate. There's no group that's completely protected. So, we do a lot of targeted efforts around children and youth, middle-aged men, African-American communities, Latino communities, and, as you said, we're getting more into the workplace. And actually, part of that was prompted by the fact that middle-aged men are hard to reach, and, and that's an outlet where we can be. And fortunately, that's something that's really evolving, and we are gonna have more training. So, it's called the Working Minds Training. It's out of the University of Colorado, very well-researched program that reaches those men where they are.
Middle-aged men are also very stubborn. I'll attest to that.
Yeah, there's particular cultural pieces with seeking help and health.
Right.
You know, it's something that's not unique to mental health care or addiction care, but those are things that we have to... Which is why it's really important when folks are speaking out, who are middle-aged men, who can kind of set that model and be that example of care. It's wonderful to have a champion like that.
Excellent program. Excellent training program.
Good.
And there's a concurrent program called Working Minds on the addiction side, so digging into that, finding people where they are in the workplace. We're also with QPR. Claire is now a master trainer. We're reaching in the faith communities, we're reaching in the school communities, and again, targeting some of the trainers that can connect to their peer group, you know, asking them, you know, talk to five people and start getting that forward. So, yeah, we've got, I think our calendar between now and December is filling up rapidly, but it's good. The other side, and not to be alarmed, when we look at our youth data, it was really alarming that now more than ever, over 25% of the students reported they were depressed or feeling hopeless more than, you know, five times in a two-week period. But that's also because we're now working with the schools. The schools are now asking these questions, dealing with students and their feelings, and so now they're talking about it more, which, again, is a way we can intervene a little earlier, hopefully, and, you know, help them when they come in after something happened over social media, help them address that. And with schools adding more personnel and connecting to the partners that the Board has in place, I hope we can get there sooner rather than later, because any death is a death that we've got to address.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation here for you today. Just read portions of it. Whereas recovery for mental illness and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, Lorraine County supports effective strategies to promote awareness of mental health and addiction concerns of Lorraine County residents, while also promoting prevention, resilience, and a commitment to social change. Now, therefore, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize September 2019 as Suicide Prevention Month and Recovery Month throughout Lorraine County, and call upon our residents to observe this month by learning what actions they can take to keep the people around them alive and well. And it's signed by all three of us. We come down and present this to you.
And if, see Pam's here, members of your Board or whatever, like, come up and... Stand in the middle here.
Well, kind of on a related topic here, we recently have received information on a contract with Locata Way to provide services to the sheriff for medication-assisted treatment, known as MAT, on a pre-release voluntary basis to inmates diagnosed with opioid addiction that are housed in the county jail. We wanted to first, I guess, bring forward Melissa Fisher and Captain Jack Hammond to talk about what's taking place at the jail.
Oh, just Melissa, not Jack?
Well, no, some Melissa and Jack, okay. But it's really important for the community. We always believe that this Board in informing the public about what's taking place, and there's so many things that come to light that we feel that the community needs to know about, become more aware of. So, with that said, I guess, we wanted to make sure that we shed some light today on the severity of what is taking place with, we have a lot of people being detoxed at the jail. Obviously, we have a number of issues concerning mental illness of people that end up in our jail as well, too. But it's quite alarming, quite disturbing, when you find out about the number of people that are being detoxed at our, at our jail. It just sheds more light on the severity of the epidemic here in Lorraine County. And without any further ado, our Assistant Jail Administrator, Melissa Fisher.
Thank you, Commissioners. We put together a PowerPoint presentation, and I've included Elaine Georges from the Mars Board, as well as Dan Haight from Locata, to speak with me today. And so, just, just as...
Do you want us to put that up now, or do you have a few opening comments?
Yes, if you could, go ahead and...
Okay.
There it is. We got it. So, I'm gonna let Elaine talk about specifics on MAT, and then we'll, we have, we'll take turns. Thank you.
Hi. So, medication-assisted treatment has been coming into the addiction world for about the last four years. The American Society of Addiction Medicine has some clear guidance on what that is, how it's effective, and the key thing to remember, it's MAT, Medication-Assisted Treatment, just like with any other disease you have. If you go to your medical provider, you would accept their medication and their guidance, and you would also work with therapy or change your behavior. So, MAT, we'll find the clicker. Does that work? Okay. MAT, you know, they use FDA-approved medications, so anything that's approved in combination with counseling, addressing the whole patient on behavioral therapies. Three types of medications that are commonly used. Methadone is a clinic-based opioid agonist. It doesn't block other narcotics while preventing withdrawals, and it would have to be done daily dosing. Naltrexone, and one of the products is Vivitrol. It's an office-based non-addictive opioid antagonist that blocks the effects of other narcotics. It can be done either on a daily pill or a monthly injection. We're looking at the monthly component for the jail project. Buprenorphine, office-based agonist, an antagonist that blocks other narcotics while reducing withdrawal. This is about really helping the patient, you know, block the withdrawal so they could move into treatment pieces. Wanted to dispel some misconceptions. You know, this isn't about substituting one drug for another. It's gonna relieve the withdrawal symptoms and physiological cravings that cause those chemical imbalances in the body. It provides a safe and controlled level of medication to overcome the use of an abused opioid. It's specific to the opioid. Now, understanding that people on some of these can use other substances and still have effects, but if we're really working with a therapeutic model, we're hoping they're not using any substance during this course of medication. With proper dose, they have no adverse effect on the person's intelligence, mental capability, functionings, or employability. The objectives are just like other objectives, you know, full recovery is where we're headed to, living a self-directed life. The approach has been shown to improve their survival, keep them in treatment, and that is the best predictor of successful recovery. If we could get people engaged in treatment, and first of all, they have to be alive, and then, second of all, engaged, and stay in treatment through their individualized plan, they have good success for recovery. Decrease illicit opiate use and other criminal activity among people with substance use disorders, and increase their ability to gain and maintain employment as they're moving out into the community. And then for women, improve birth outcomes who have substance use disorders and who are pregnant. Gonna turn it over to Melissa.
MAT in the jail setting is a controversial subject across the nation, just due to risk of diversion and other things that happen in the correctional setting. In our county, we've been talking about MAT in the jail setting since about 2015, and then, and as such, across the nation, there's been a growing number of jails who have started MAT. It looks different from, for many jails, depending on their size and what resources they have in the community. In 2016, our jail began coordinating Vivitrol injections upon release. And so, as of 2018, there are approximately 200 jails in 30 states across the country that provide MAT, using this specific form of MAT. In 2016 and 2018, our jail participated in sequential mapping, and, and so, part of that mapping process was identify what our needs were at the jail. So, from that mapping, we did do a pilot project for opiate screening and referral with support from the Mars Board, formerly the Addus Board. We do have linkages to peer support, and then we recently began a jail case management. And so, also across the country, there are several federal cases regarding MAT in the jail with a growing body of case law to suggest that jails should be continuing MAT if the inmate comes into jail with active prescription. And so, the National, for example, the National Sheriff's Association just published a really great guidance document for jails, and it's all about MAT in the jails. And so, I can send the Commissioners a link to that, and that was just released this summer. Diversion of MAT is a real correctional concern, and for us in the, in the jail, it's about making sure that we educate our correctional staff. There's a lot of debate in our correctional environment about how we help our most, the inmates who are in the most need. And so, so it's really been a growing interest in the jail, and then how do we do it? We have components, and so, with this new project, this expansion project, we hope that we can be able to offer a more comprehensive program. This slide reviews some of our behavioral health statistics, and I put this together a couple of years ago and started tracking our statistics related to behavioral health, along with some things like book homelessness and suicide logs and that type of thing. But as you can see, the number of detox logs started, that represents detox logs, alcohol, benzos, and opiates. And so, that very top line will represent in red the number of detox logs started. And so, as you can see, it's still something that, that makes us think, like, I think the Commissioner said, that it's very important for us to think about who we're serving and how we help them. So, just some quick stats of the 8,000 over 8,000 inmates detained, and we looked at a period of September 2018 through August 19. 904 came to the jail needing opiate withdrawal management, so that's about 75 monthly. 32 of those were pregnant women. Immates are screened for substance abuse disorder at multiple stages as they come into the jail. There's a booking questionnaire that asks questions, there's a medical assessment by a nurse, and then the mental health assessment. All, all three of those help us substantiate whether they're in detox and what their needs are. Our clinical staff do use an instrument called the CAWS, Clinical Opiate Withdrawal Scale, and that assists the medical in determining the stage or severity of opiate withdrawal and assess the level of physical dependence on opioids. Opiate detox peaks in about 72 hours and lasts upwards to five to seven days. Immates experienced opiate detox are placed on a detox log, and that means that they're monitored by our medical staff, and they're giving over-the-counter medications to ease their symptoms of detox. Aside from some services that we have, like the self-help groups, because we do offer NA and AA, and those have been ongoing for years, we also have a psychoed group that is ran by Locata, and that's offered in-house. So, our current opiate protocol, and I'll go over what we're planning to do next, but basically, we, we partner with our Firelands in Locata to provide Vivitrol injections upon release. That's our preferred MAT drug at the moment. That is in injectable form. Subbutex is prescribed for pregnant females, and a little bit about subbutex, but Dan will go in the more clinical aspect of these drugs. That prevents a pregnant female from detoxing, and as you can imagine, detox can result in preterm labor, fetal distress, or even miscarriage. Immates may be referred to Firelands or Locata Way prior to release with Vivitrol injections coordinated upon release. In addition to this, we also partnered with our Lorraine County Public Health, and with a Project Dawn kit are given to inmates who want that. They're required to go through a little educational program, and then, once they do that, then that Narcan kit is placed in their property, and so, when they leave, they have a Narcan kit. So, to date, we have 138 inmates that voluntarily elected to, to take a kit and that training. We also have a, the ability to bill our local Mars Board for the subbutex and Vivitrol that's currently being used prior to our expansion, and so, to date, the Mars has reimbursed the jail over 17,000 for those drugs. So, moving forward, and I can say that we are excited about this, and it's been a work in motion for at least a year, I would say, that we've been planning this. We've, we've had the fortunate, really, we are fortunate in the fact that because there... We've had the fortunate, really, we are fortunate in the fact that because there are jails across the nation, we can learn from them. We were on a national conference call, and we had the ability to ask questions of these other jails, and it was really much, a very learning experience for our jail, and it kind of set our ability to develop this new protocol. So again, this is a voluntary program. Inmates will have a choice of provider, Firelands or Locata. Our new clinic is a dedicated space within the jail. We had to do some shuffling with offices, and the clinic needed its own independent bathroom. So we did clear that space, and so now it's in the secure perimeter of the jail, and we do have that being set up this week, actually. Hours of operation were established. We wanted to make sure that's consistent with our jail operation. And so what we have planned now, we have one clinic space available, and then our one day of a clinic time that they can meet with a provider, and then we also have carved out daily times as well. In addition to this, in order to support the movement of inmates from the housing area to the clinic and offer protection for both the provider, special corrections detail was created, and this detail is supported by an allocation from the Mars Board, and Elaine will talk a little bit more about that. And as we move into this new expansion, we are very mindful of the need of correction officer training and education, and so we had our first round of training with our sergeants' group a couple weeks ago. We had training videos that are being shown in roll call for our correctional staff. Hey, I'm going to turn it over to Dan. Were any questions to this point?
Yeah, I guess I'm clarifying.
Okay.
The question, I was talking to my colleagues up here, and we saw with that first graphic there, it says inmates placed on opioid detox log by jail medical are referred to the MAT clinic. This is a voluntary program, so when they come in, there's no orders from the court that they have to participate in a certain program?
No.
Right, because they're not sentenced.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just for clarification.
Yep.
Okay. And then also, I don't want us to lose sight of those earlier numbers that you had on the previous screen there. So you're telling us in the past year, we've had 904 who needed opioid withdrawal management, averaging about 75 a month.
Correct.
And 32, horrible news, were pregnant.
Correct.
Those are very, very alarming numbers.
They are.
Okay, so I was going to speak today regarding the actual medical team that we have in place, and what us.
You have to state your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Dan Haid from Locata Way.
Thanks.
So what we're going to actually end up doing, as they become voluntary through the course of admission into the jail, they're going to volunteer for the program. The, depending on what our physician, our physician assistant does in terms of what they call an MAT eval, that's evaluation of the person, will determine whether a course of action they would like to go. Labs will be done if they have to, want to do the course of Vivitrol, and a daily Naltrexone will be provided to them by the jail personnel while they're going through this process. Certain labs, liver enzyme in particular, is the reason why somebody couldn't do Vivitrol, depending on if their liver ratings are too high or not. The other course of treatment could be through, to SUBLOCADE, which is the injectable Suboxone. In that course, you have to do a two-day prior to the person getting any injection, they have to do a two-day pill, and what we're going to do in the jail is utilize crushed medications rather than, that way the person can't divert it, cheek it, put it on their tongue, et cetera. Our nursing staff and Firelands nursing staff, I'm sure, is very well adverse to this and understand, and make sure the person is compliant with their medications upon that. Each customer will receive a UDS prior to providing any of these. As we know, jail is secure, however, there is stuff that always tries to get through, so we'll ensure through UDSs that they are still compliant and taking their medications as prescribed. With the women, again, they'll be on a subbutex course, again, the difference between Suboxone and subbutex is the naloxone difference. Suboxone has the naloxone, which actually will prevent the person from basically getting a high from another drug, or from opiates and/or alcohol, if they decide to take that while on the pill. SUBLOCADE is an injectable, does the same thing as Suboxone, however, it's a long-term release, will release over time. Vivitrol is exactly the same thing as well, it's a 28-day schedule. Our nursing staff and Firelands nursing staff will be there typically on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Our physicians right now are scheduled to be there on Tuesdays to start the process, and then as needed after that. Again, this is a project that's fairly new, so we'll probably adjust, you know, accordingly to the jail and the jail schedule. One of the biggest pieces to this, again, is going to be the case management and care coordination that Melissa had said. One of the biggest things with this is making sure there's communication from the jail medical staff to the Locata Way and Firelands medical staff, and then from there, coordinating that care to outside. As you guys are, I'm sure, are well aware that, you know, this is only as good as while they're in jail, and then what happens afterwards, right? So we want to make sure we coordinate release dates between their case managers and our case managers. We want to make sure that, determine what they need. Do they need transportation when they get out? Do they need housing? Do they need additional treatment, where they're court-ordered for a certain particular thing? So there are a lot of things that go into play with this that we need to make sure we have great communication as we start this project. As mentioned before, both providers will have clinical staff there, physician assistant, nurse practitioners, and then ongoing after that, we'll be providing, again, ongoing assessments by all the partners. So we have staff in the jail, Firelands has staff in the jail that provides ongoing assessments and things like that. So, are there any questions on the protocols that we'd be providing? All right, thank you.
Thanks. Don from Firelands, did you have anything that you wanted to add? I didn't realize that you were part of it. No? Okay.
Okay. So why aren't we just continuing to do what we've started? Well, as you heard from Melissa and Dan, quite often, you know, an inmate may come in on Vivitrol, and we want, we've continued that, but there are individuals that that might be their first hope to get connected to treatment and medication-assisted treatment. And 40 to 60-plus percentage of the inmates do not have a planned release date. We tried that. We really tried to say, wow, if we could meet them and then coordinate their date, but oftentimes through the legal process, they're out. And so, this helps us tighten all that up. And again, continuing the care that started in the jail and keeping them with a hot handoff directly to the provider they started with or their provider of choice, making sure there's no gap. And that's the other reason that we have peers surrounding them also, we've been able to open that up too. So this is an opportunity to meet them where they're at, and then when they're released, they're totally connected to a community partner.
Do you have any statistics on what this handoff looks like? I mean, is it one out of every three that actually connects, or how often does a gap actually surface? Because, you know, we can invest these dollars to help people turn things around, but the minute they return to the street.
Well, that's why we need to do that. We tried the other way, and it wasn't working. Quite often, they were out the door 7:00 AM on Tuesday, and nobody knew that except for their attorney, you know, or the record just had them out. And so, you know, that's the piece. The numbers are 40 to 60% of the inmates do not have a planned date.
Right.
Because we thought that would be the most optimal way to get them connected. So it's a significant amount of those inmates that are kind of in and out, two days in and out, but if we could meet them within that week's time even to get them started, and they've got a case manager both in the jail and connecting to a clinician from one of the agencies, hopefully there's tighter opportunity to meet them on the way out. So fortunately, Ohio has been given a significant amount of the State Opiate Response Grant. That came into our county last year, and we just got the notice that it is continued for September 30th to the next year. So we'll be able to fund the majority of this component, and the State Opiate Response Grant is from SAMSA to states, and it's really to focus on expanding medication-assisted treatment throughout. And so that's why this is a significant program. We also just heard, we have a program with Mercy Hospital where at the emergency room, their physicians are able to put a person on buprenorphine and hand them over to a provider, and just this week, four patients were able to walk out connected to a provider. So we've got to expand our MAT footprint throughout the county to do that. So the State Opiate Response Grant is significant to fund this. The TCAP, the Targeted Community Alternatives to Prison Fund, through the Court of Common Please and the Commissioners, is also helping to support some of the startups for this. And then Firelands Hospital, which supports Firelands Counseling in Lorraine County, has a multi-county SAMSA grant to expand medication-assisted treatment, including with the jails in the communities they serve. So there are three funding sources that are supporting this project as we speak. So the budget looks like about $173,000. The medical salaries for the Locata Way, the nurses and the clinicians and the physician supported by the SOR grant through the Locata Way. The Firelands grant is about $40,000, and it's part of their grant to support their staffing. The clinic equipment, the basic equipment to start it up, Sherry Klausert was generous enough to support with TCAP money. It's that one-time product cost, it's not really equipment, and it's just, it's durable pieces to have that little clinic set up. The medication, the SOAR money which comes through our board, will fund the medication. It's quite costly. The injectables are, you know, $1,000, $1,100, so we've got to pay for it while a person's in jail, they don't have Medicaid. So that's the gap we've got to make sure that gets covered.
Are they now suspending rather than eliminating their Medicaid when they enter the jail? Do you know? So when they get back out, are they back on their Medicaid immediately so they can get their medication?
Yeah, Ohio suspends it. That's correct.
Okay.
So it's that gap while they're in. We've got to fund that medication during that time. The special detail that Melissa mentioned for the safety of the patients, the clinician, and just the efficiency of this, the SOAR grant will fund that. That's the time for the detail officers to move the patients throughout to their treatment and back in. And then there's the jail case manager that Melissa talked about, is supported by TCAP for this year. So as we're going forward, we need to look at this as it starts, which hopefully it's starting these next few weeks, you know, determining how to sustain this and enhance the operations. The issue is, you know, why bring in outside medical staff when there's medical staff at the jail? The jail's not a certified treatment facility under Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services, so that's a piece. I mean, it could become a certified treatment facility, but it's the jail, right? And so these partnerships also are so important to have somebody connected to a community-based partner as they're being released. So we're going to be looking at, for sure, sustaining the service, identifying outcomes, and with the State Opiate Response Money, they are following the client from the minute they see them, at three months, at six months. So we're, as well as with the SAMSA federal grant, so our eyes are on where that person is throughout all of this, and we'll put some shorter outcome measures as we go. And so with additional resources, the jail has ability to further develop this, and again, bring it as normal part of their medical and behavioral health opportunity for the inmates they serve. Any questions?
Yeah, Elaine, when you talk about that handoff, so have you formulated a process whereby the, inside the facility will have a timely communication with Locata or Firelands so that that handoff piece is guaranteed to be a smooth process?
We'll try to make it as smooth as possible. That is an area of concern for us, only because of, like Elaine talked about, inmates can be released anytime, they can post bond, you know, so the jail is a constant churning machine, but, so our jail case manager that we have in place will assist with this project. Firelands and Locata have case management support as well, so those case managers will talk. Our MAT clinic hours are set so that both Locata and Firelands can come in on a daily basis and/or their clinical staff or case management staff. Our jail case manager is also there every day too. So that's an area that we will keep a watchful eye on because we know it's important.
Would there be a way that Locata and Firelands would have access to like a daily count? So when you do your count, if there is a person who's no longer in that count, maybe they'd be aware of it electronically or whatever, that same day?
Yeah, what happens is, as they move through our medical division, there's a log generated, so that detox log, all those names will be given to our case manager, and then so she meets with them and provides that initial point, and then from there, then they get referred to Locata. And you have to remember that, you know, there is 75, but not all 75 will want to be a part of this. So we don't, at this point, know exactly what the percentage will be. We, our plans were for about four a week, so is what, is what we're using as a target.
Can you switch back over so we can see the speakers? There you go.
Elaine, a question. In that gap period, is there a critical or like a targeted window where, as it goes, 24 hours, 48 hours, 72, where all of a sudden you know that our success statistic's going to fall off faster? Has there been a study on that?
So the Washington policy identifies that when a person is seeking help, asking for a service, if we could provide them a connection within the first three days.
Okay.
Their chance of getting to the service goes up, and then within 30 days, if we could provide them three or more treatment services beyond case management, they're successful, or their chances of retention go up significantly.
Excellent.
So that's why, you know, everybody wrapping around as soon as they can, and again, at the jail, they're kind of, you know, more captive audience, and if you've got multiple case managers and medical personnel and even peers, you've got a good opportunity, we're hoping.
Excellent.
So when an inmate is getting released, couldn't they not call their peer support person for the ride to get home or wherever they're going, so then that would trigger the, hey, they're out, now we need to wrap the services around them as they exit?
Yes, and that's why we've already, we already have peers available to them, and that's not been counted against their visits. That's allowable for what they need. So again, engaging with a peer while they're in there, they might not have had a peer before, and again, if they might hit through this medical, that might also be an opportunity. Do you have a peer? Let's connect you.
Right.
So bringing all those partners together is critical here.
I guess, you know, it always comes down to the numbers and being able to pay for everything, and I guess I wanted to have Melissa kind of weigh in as well too, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the one graphic you had there talked about reimbursed for the Vivitrol and the subbutex, about $17,900. I'm sure this overall programming, I'm trying to figure out what portions are being paid by the jail, what portions are being paid through Mars, those types of things, and where we're still coming up short, and, you know, why maybe the state's not weighing in a little bit more, those types of things.
Well, the 17,000 reflects just the MAT used up until that certain point. I think a last billing was in May of this year. So on our budget, we had 50,000 budgeted for medications, and that comes out of the SOAR grant, and that's based on the number of inmates we think that are going to go through this, and like Elaine said, the injections run between $1,200 and $1,500 apiece, so that's where that $50,000 comes in. And so, our jail case manager will assist in the Medicaid, so someone's not active on the Medicaid rolls. Part of her job will be to assist them in getting Medicaid eligible, and so obviously once they get out of jail, then Medicaid can take over as the payer for that medication.
And they pay for both of those, Medicaid?
From my understanding, yeah.
They readily pay for Vivitrol, but the SUBLOCADE is a one to do a ton of parol showing that they were failed on Suboxone.
Well, I guess also, I think what would be helpful, and I know I had a kind of informal conversation with the sheriff one day, and now Elaine, I was with your new board, I think it would be very advantageous to actually pay a visit to the jail and see firsthand what's going on. You know, I think for the reporters here too, you know, this detox situation is a very serious problem at our jail. It's a, you know, sadly an ugly situation too, because people are literally detoxing, you know, at our jail. And as you stated earlier, we're not like one of these certified detox centers to be doing this.
Right. A day, is it a month?
A month.
A hundred, between 100 and 165 or so a month?
That includes opiates, benzos, and alcohol.
Alcohol too, okay.
So that's also the need to expand the whole crisis response for Lorraine County, including adding detox beds and the whole crisis improvement for our community. Again, the jail is not, you know, a treatment facility. They happen to be amenable to supporting the inmates with treatment, which is fortunate for them, but you don't want to tell people that's your best detox facility, right? So we are looking at the board level. We've been working with crisis improvements to be able to figure that out. You may have seen that Lorraine County got a significant You may have seen that Lorraine County got a significant earmark for a private and public partnership for Crisis Stabilization Center in this year's biennial budget. That's great news, however, it's operating money. We don't have a facility yet. So we're working with that. But Ohio has made over, I think it's $21 million into crisis improvements throughout the state. So this year, Ohio Moss and PEGS Foundation are pulling together national leaders to help us get this done right. And it's not just one thing. It includes things that we do have in place already, the mobile crisis response, the 24-hour hotline, the warm line. But we've got to do better. We've got to do a 23-hour, you know, respite receiving center for if an officer might find somebody that, you know, they may be better served at this facility center versus taking them to jail or the emergency room. Adding detox beds that are connected to that facility so they have the right doorway to do that. Our board is putting that on as their standing agenda item as one of their new committees. But we're also part of Ohio's Crisis Academy, which is scheduled for next month, and they want to talk to us. The big issue is the sustainability of operating it. Right now Medicaid could pay, but Medicaid is not paying for the center. They're paying on a client-by-client basis. And so that's putting our model at a significant gap per day, per client. And so we also have to advocate with Medicaid, if you have a crisis center, it's a firehouse. You can't plan who's coming in, when, and how. So one of our big advocacy pieces that we're going to continue to sit down with Ohio Medicaid and Ohio Moss is to figure that piece out. And then we could sustain this piece. But there's a whole, you know, there's a lot of technicality in this, but we want to get this right. I know, you know, I actually have a meeting next week with Mr. Cordez to talk about, you know, what was, what we should be doing and how we could leverage. The foundations are still interested in figuring this out with us. And in some communities, the hospitals have invested in this because it can help their emergency rooms. Those folks are going there, they, you know, they might be more efficiently served there. Finding the other, and again, naming it a private-public partnership has an amazing opportunity for Lorraine County to get this right finally, so.
But I think the important thing to point out is that, you know, in the past, the Addis Board had tried to provide as much support as possible. The reality is you did not have the same resources that the Mental Health Board had had. The other reality is that we have co-occurring issues. And now, as a result of this board wanting to see the boards merged, we think there needs to be a new way of thinking, a new approach. And, I mean, now if we can't connect the dots and see the co-occurring issues, I don't know when we ever will. But you've heard here a prime example of how your resources were limited in the past. We know that there are much greater resources now. And anybody knows that if you want to look at the financials. And those resources should be crossing over to help out with initiatives like this. This is taxpayer money. They support the levy. They support the mental health levy. And as a result of doing that, they expect this money to be invested in the people so that individuals are not coming right out of jail, relapsing, you know, breaking into their homes, committing crimes, not getting back to their families and being productive members of society. So I just think it's critical that the new board take a tour, learn what's going on out there, take a look at what was being done in the past and how what was done in the past is not to the level where it needs to be for the future, and make a wise investment so that we can help address this issue. Because, you know, one way or another, the taxpayers pay for it, but they approve this levy, saying that they want people to be helped and have their lives turned around. And that's what this community needs to see.
Absolutely. And the board had their first planning retreat last month and that was high on their priority to take on. And this crisis improvement has included the sheriff and, you know, the police departments and the medical staff from the hospital. So we've got to continue to bring them back together. And so I think this is the year we're going for it. So we're excited. It's a big, it's a big heavy pull, but we've got to do it and we've got the resources, the knowledge to do that. So we're ready.
Yeah, with that said, also being able to use those resources, I guess there's just a couple other components that I'd like to bring up. But I was just wondering, I see Tom Stubber here today. Tom, was there anything you wanted to add to this about Locata and its involvement? I know that Mr. Height here does a good job, but I thought you might want to add some things.
By the way, I heard you on the podcast cover two resources. You did a nice job.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tom Stubber, the Locata Way, thank you commissioners. I very much support this project. And Melissa, the sheriff, Elaine have done a great job in bringing together providers that can serve as this handoff to get people on. I was, I had not seen the graph before, but what struck me about the graph is that one of those very lower lines said inmates who had reported previous counseling. That meant that they had received mental health or addiction treatment before. And the gap between that and those requiring detox is an indication that so many have never received any opportunity for treatment or clinical services. And this will be that first opportunity. The medication will be the carrot. And in order for them to continue, they will have to follow through with the treatment provider that started them on that. So I think that you've done a tremendous, everybody's done a tremendous piece to try to help people get treatment for the first time and will save a lot of lives. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. So, yeah, thank you for the presentations this morning. And Elaine, like I said, I just wanted to follow up on another area of concern concerning the county, since we have you here and have your expertise and knowledge. We, and I see your vice chair now is here as well too, Pam, if you want to join us. We just, we just want to have a conversation about also making sure that, you know, this is one example here we hope things will be done differently moving forward. But, and obviously, when we're detoxing people in the jail and we're dealing with mental illness issues in the jail, those are obviously issues that end up costing a lot of money to get things done. So, you know, we're pleased to hear that you're looking at how to handle things differently in the future. We also just want, have some concerns about, that we've received from the courts regarding the specialty courts, the treatment courts, and some issues that have gone by the wayside regarding some of their funding. And I was hoping you could give us an update on that as well too, because I actually had one judge describe it as a crisis to me. So we're trying to figure out how to deal with it at this point. And this is for informational purposes.
Gotcha. So, yes, so the specialty docket courts, three years ago, we wrote assistance through SAMSA for the Lorraine County Recovery Court. It was a three-year award that happened. And it ends this month. It paid for the coordinator as well as staff, as well as some treatment services, medication-assisted treatment, peers, and some other needs. Recovery housing was not allowed on that. So that grant ended, it ends this month. The deadline back.
What did he say? Did you say hold?
Microphone. I'm sorry. Okay. So that grant ended. There was an opportunity, well, SAMSA grant cycle was last winter and the eyes of the coordinator, the project person at our office, everybody missed it. It was just, grants come up weekly and there wasn't a piece on that, so it didn't get reapplied for. There was a BJA opportunity, Bureau of Justice Administration, that we did work on. I did, and it's on me, I trusted my program manager to submit. She submitted it on a day I wasn't here. She accidentally did not submit a key piece, which it didn't get offered. So in the middle, we have received technical assistance from the National Drug Court System to help us find a way to bridge what to do. We're looking for the next round of funding. One of the things, good and bad, BJA is usually a longer-term opportunity, more than three years. It always requires hard cash match. The first time when it came through, that was the big issue with BJA. So figuring out what to do, how to do, we've got to come together and figure out cash.
Can TCAP match that?
TCAP could potentially match it. The issue is, is we thought we had another fund, which is the Addiction Treatment Program money, but when we followed the source, it's ultimately federal money. So we have to be really, I think TCAP is a state fund. So we're going to be looking at that piece. The court does have access now to an allocation called Addiction Treatment Programming from Ohio Moss in their budget. Therefore, Supreme Court certified courts. Now we have four potential courts that the same amount of allocation could have been spent on with two courts. It's now possibly going to have to be spread over Lorraine County Recovery Court and also the Family Drug Court, which is a small capacity.
What about the Muni Courts?
So then the Muni Courts, as they come online, Alaria Muni Court has received certification. They're up and running. Lorraine is in motion to possibly receive certification in December. So there is funding that it will be significantly designated to the Recovery Court for services. It's for the treatment and recovery needs of the participants. So, and it's just the formula, because they're the largest volume, we want to make sure the largest amount of money goes to that number. So we're, and we're in a middle mode, you know, and with all of the, you know, yeah, it's on me, I own it. The grant wasn't submitted correctly, but we're looking for the next round. We're paying attention to when the SAMSA grant cycle comes up. It'll be after the federal fiscal year starts, which will be, usually they start lining up after October. And then the BJA usually hits their notice in late winter. So we're going to be working with the court to determine what they need to do. The advisory committee met last month and we're trying to figure all that out.
As I said, I had a judge describe it to me as a crisis. And I guess, just for the sake, because when we have these public meetings, we like to educate the public. We keep using terms SAMSA, TCAP, and all these things, if we can define our terms and remember that along the way. I know those in the industry know it. Like, I can't tell you folks how many meetings I sit in and it's like, okay, I think I remember what that one is. Familiarize me again. But I guess, just so that the public's educated on it and so that we have a greater understanding, I'm trying to determine, so it sounds like two grants were missed. One was a deadline issue, another one was the wrong grant application, I believe.
Total of those, please.
And we're just trying to figure out what the monetary amount now that there's a gap that creates this crisis and what those grants were specifically being used for.
So the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant, the SAMSA Grant, which is a Division of Health and Human Services for the Drug Court, primarily it was funding the Drug Court Coordinator as well as the evaluation following. It's the same federal following of participants through three months, six months, as well as coordinating some of the services. It did have limits. You could only spend 15% of it for peer support. You can spend, so, and over the years, we, it was a $325,000 grant. I believe we were spending about $250,000 to $280,000 of that annually.
Is that the three-year grant?
It was the three-year grant.
So would we multiply that times three?
Yes.
Was it matched by anything?
It did not have match, which was one of the reasons initially we wrote it, because when that Recovery Court was just starting, there was no knowledge of what to do. The other issue with that grant, the reason we didn't spend all of the money is it's based on participants. The court, when it was started, it identified its census as 100. For the first year, it was slow to grow. It is now at 75, but the first year, year and a half, it was about 20 to 30. And so actually SAMSA came in with technical assistance a couple times to help figure out what we could do differently to raise. And now we've figured, it took about two and a half years with technical assistance and working with the prosecutor's office as well as, and these are, this is voluntary also, you can't mandate for this, but we are now at a capacity. So part of the reason some of the money wasn't spent is because we didn't have participants to spend the money on.
So that was one grant?
Right.
And what was the second one in the purpose and the amount?
The second one, I believe it was a, I think it was like a $400,000 grant to continue what SAMSA had started at the newer capacity, but it needed, I believe it needed a 50% match.
So essentially, that's 600 out of our operating ability.
Well, so the ATP will fund a lot of the services that were in the SAMSA grant for the participants.
Who will do that?
The ATP, the Addiction Treatment Program money that is now allocated to these courts.
Could it have been used in conjunction with it?
No, it will be used. And that's part of the other reason why some of the SAMSA money wasn't fully used, because it wouldn't fund recovery housing. So fortunately, we have ATP funding that spent a lot of money, over $120,000 for recovery housing, that that grant would not allow. And we petitioned SAMSA three years in a row because everybody needs recovery housing as they're going through primarily Phase 1 and Phase 2. I believe that the cost gap is for the coordinator staff as well as some of the case management staff that the probation department has brought on. I feel that because we have the state opiate response money and the ATP money, this year, a lot of the participants, when they're in Phase 1 and Phase 2, are in services either at Locata or Firelands, that the SOAR money can help cover that gap during this short time, as well as there is recovery housing money in the state opiate response money as well as ATP money.
So just, so I have this straight and we're throwing around a lot of numbers. So basically, the one grant came out to about $250,000 a year and that was over a three-year...
325.
325.
The first one.
Times three. And then that's one. And then the other one was $400,000. Wow.
Plus the matching funds that would have...
Plus the matching funds.
Added to it.
So that's a lot of money, a lot of money lost. I'm just, I guess my question would be, and it's something you can take back to your board, Madam Vice Chair, is, you know, since these omissions took place, if the board would somehow consider making these programs whole, certainly finding a way to make them whole. Otherwise, you know, like I said, the taxpayers have already supported dollars from their property taxes to provide these kinds of services. And we just don't feel like that should be something that ends up on this side of the ledger when the taxpayers have already approved for programming of this nature to be supported. But that is a significant amount of money and you can understand why some of the judges have said to me that we have a little bit of a crisis here that we have to deal with.
Thanks. Pam White, Vice Chair of the New Mars Board. One of the things that we have been talking about as we've merged and looking at staff, you know, everybody thinks that automatically emerged, like we did St. Joseph Community, that, you know, we're going to get rid of staff. Well, in this instance, it's sort of the...
We never proposed that for the record.
That was never our intention.
But, no, we've had those conversations though at our board, actually. But anyway, one of the positions that I personally have proposed that we put there as a grants manager. As you know, I think on the Addis side, since we did not have a levy, all of our services were always covered under grants and the dollars that we would get from the state. So, you know, grants manager position, that's like a full-time, huge kind of position. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, we missed these two, but, you know, in the past, you know, we've done a great job. Well, that's how we've sustained ourselves basically is through grants. But, yeah, a full-time grants manager position would be something that our board is recommending.
I understand our disappointment because we were told during the merger process, there was all this experience and all this expertise, and then we see this great loss of money. And we're trying to figure out how this all, how this all happened. And, you know, as a board that receives money from the taxpayers, you're as accountable as we are to them. And I just believe that since the error was made on your watch, that you should make them whole. You can take that back to the board.
Yeah, I will. I'll certainly do that.
And we didn't interview during the process because you were a state appointment, but we told each and every person that we interviewed during that merger that we didn't anticipate anybody losing their job, that we thought that this board was going to be even bigger than the two boards, that we probably would even need more staff. So we never anticipated any, anybody losing their job through that whole process, just so you know.
That's good, but we've had those among our board, those discussions. So, you know, it's more of an internal thing. I'm sorry if I didn't mean...
No, no. I just wanted you to know that we didn't anticipate any job losses during that whole thing.
Okay. Is there anything you want to clarify on those? Where do you see the board then, Pam, going forward from here? Have there already been discussions? Will there be discussions?
Yeah, we've actually, I was going to reserve comments to the public comment period, but if you like, I can provide them now.
That's around the topic.
Anyway, yeah, we've done a whole lot since the merge, which is almost exactly a two-month point right now. The Board of Directors had our first meeting. We fulfilled and created the governance structure, reviewing bylaws. Tim Carion, as you know, is the chair. Tim Carion, as you know, is the Chair. I'm the Vice Chair. David Ashenhurst is Chair of Governance. And Inez James has been elected as our Secretary. And so we've been just doing a lot of stuff, putting the committees together, everything that we need to do to make sure that there is no interruption in services. The staff has been working together, working madly. There's folks that are looking at the budgets. You know, it's just a lot of stuff has been going on. We actually had also on a Saturday, a full day. One of the first board meetings was to bring in the Chair or the Executive Director of Awakaba, which is the Ohio Association for Behavioral Health Authorities. And that is the organization that all of the boards belong to in the state. And she did an overview for the new board, for all board members on roles and duties of the boards, ethics in public service. We also had a good overview of sunshine laws and also took a in-depth look at our network of services. And then she, excuse me, provided a state-of-the-state report. So that was an all-day event. And now the next, one of the next things we're doing aside from our regular meetings is looking at strategic planning. That needs to be happening and, you know, bringing together our strategic priorities. So as I said, we don't want to have any disruption in services to our clients. And so the staff have been carrying on. We also reviewed what our core values are as a united board. And the first is that we know that mental illness and substance use disorder are treatable diseases and that they are diseases. We believe that treatment works and that people can recover. We want to build a system of care that has the best services and encourages people to participate in their own care. And that's a movement that's been on probably more so the addiction side for a little bit longer, but it's called recovery-oriented systems of care where we really want the client. You know, they're, they have to really be active in their care. And of course, we're going to monitor, monitor performance measures and outcomes, promote cooperation between the board, the community, and our provider agencies, and advocate for all the people who need and use our services. So these values certainly are in line with my personal values as a psychiatric nurse for many, many years. And so, and our, our full board, you know, has really bought into these values. So, and then just a reminder, as Elaine mentioned, a week from Sunday is the Race for Recovery. That's at Baroque, early in the morning. And then in the afternoon is at Lakeview Park, the suicide event. Week from Saturday, not Sunday. We'll all be in church Sunday, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, thanks.
Just, just for clarification, there was a grant manager in the Recovery Court, right? When the, the grant was missed?
There was a, she was basically the project evaluator, yeah, who kind of managed.
It's just when you brought up about wanting to bring the grant person on board, I thought, well, wait a minute.
She was funded through the grant. And so as part of the opportunity of hearing what the board's discussing of that position deeper, because there are other grants available, there are other grants that the former Mental Health Board had, as well as some other grants that are being managed today. And, yeah, so that's what they're talking about, because it is a lot of detail to manage, absolutely, for one staff at least to do that.
And especially if you have a federal grant, you know, in my experience from my previous job, I got to participate in a federal grant and that was like a huge, I didn't even have the bulk of the responsibility. But with federal grants, the reporting is just phenomenal. So it's, it's a lot, a lot of work, the grant process.
Well, it's clear, it requires some skill and competence in that role because we see how costly it can be if we, if we aren't able to deliver. That's critical.
And I was looking over your board minutes, you have a meeting tomorrow. I guess the question I've been asked is with the new boards now merging, is, is the board looking at possibly doing a na, a national search for leadership or?
Yeah, that's a good question and we have discussed that.
It's a question I get asked a lot.
Through the, our, our executive committee, we've talked about that, that there will certainly be a search. I don't know if it's national or whatever, but those details haven't really been worked out or discussed in full. It was just sort of an item, you know, on our list.
And just so everybody understands how your board functions, you have an executive committee that meets and then you bring recommendations back to the whole board.
Right.
Okay. And any, the public can attend those? Are those open to the public?
Yeah, the executive committee is open to the public, yeah, as well as any of our other committees, so.
Okay. Okay, very good. Well, as I said, we just want to continue to inform the public what's going on. Obviously, we want to work closely with you. You can understand the heartburn we're having and some concerns here about some of these very serious issues in the county. I mean, we have an epidemic here. And with, with your background, you can certainly understand that these are co-occurring issues. I often wondered why the board would not adopt an understanding that there are co-occurring issues and therefore there should be the availability of more funding that can cross over to also take care of addiction.
We could talk about that for a very long time.
We can, we can have that conversation now.
But, you know, and, and it's still, I'll tell you this, it's the reason why if you are a hospital that has a psychiatric department, you're not allowed to admit somebody with an addictions, a primary addictions diagnosis because you're not going to be reimbursed. There is still a separation between psychiatry and addictions across the country and it has to do with. Now, there is also some philosophical and good reasons why, you know, you don't necessarily mix those. You know, if somebody gets admitted with, you know, the acute psychotic episode because they have schizophrenia, they're going to be treated very differently in the emergency room and anywhere as opposed to someone who's coming into an emergency department that, you know, wants to be detoxed from opiates. You know, the other thing with the jail conversation, you know, we're talking about opiates, but alcohol is still, the new Ohio Substance Abuse Report just came out. And the number one substance that we're seeing in Ohio and in our region is alcohol. Number two is marijuana. And oh boy, we've legalized it to some extent. So, you know, especially in the jail, when we're talking, you got nurses there, which is wonderful. But, you know, the only addiction, the only withdrawal that you can actually die from is alcohol withdrawal.
And benzos.
Yeah. And that, not even as much, but alcohol, with, you know, other people just wish they would.
They, they feel like they're dying, but they're not gonna, yeah.
And I just think it would be really informative for your board members to be able to, like I said, go to the jail, see firsthand what's going on and how we're trying to help. Yeah, 24/7, they'd love to have you.
I actually got to go to the jail when I was working at EMH and you guys had opened up this little psych wing.
Right, yeah. But I think that would help out tremendously, so I would strongly encourage you to do that. I hope you'll take that message back to the board.
Yeah, well.
And I think it'd also be important for board members to sit in on the Recovery Courts and the Veterans Treatment Court, whatever the case may be, and see firsthand what's going on. Because I think when they see firsthand the severity of the, of the challenges that we have over at this county jail and they see the, the stories of the people who come through these treatment courts, they have a better understanding of why it's so important to have a broader perspective and make the investment and not try to do all this, you know, segregation of funds because a lot of this is co-occurring issues.
The levy is going to determine the, how you're going to be able to spend, spend it, but.
And same with the grants. Some of the grants that we have gotten on the Addus side are so specific that you can only use them for certain components within addiction.
These seven other counties have found a way to co-mingle the funds and invest in people. And I'm sure this board will find it too, hopefully.
And I believe Dr. Curran told us, just coming out of the gate, there was going to be over a million dollars available as a merged board, the access to those funds. So I would hope that's going to be our focus is, starting on that first million.
Did learn during the whole stepping up thing is people with severe mental illness, when they go to jail, get worse. People with addiction get better, even before all this new.
Exactly.
MAT that we're going to have, so it's going to be even more, people are going to get better in jail, so.
Unless you have schizophrenia.
I'm excited about that. Pardon me?
I said unless you have schizophrenia.
Right, that's what I said, severe mental illness, you're going to get worse. And so that's why we're trying to divert them from going to jail and get them into treatment.
Exactly. Well, I'm, I'm very happy that our commissioners are so supportive of, you know, our entire behavioral health needs in the community. So, you know, you don't necessarily see that everywhere and certainly our jails.
Well, we're very passionate about that, that's why we did the merger. So looking forward to working with you.
On a good note, I would like to say I, I like the impact and the quantity level of the anti-stigma campaign that's been, been initiated. I think, what, about two months ago it started? But I, that was such a nice positive move to see that that was, was taking place and the intensity and, and level of it. Thanks for, for doing that.
Yeah, we have to continue to remind people it's an illness. And, you know, I did some public speaking this past week and still had some folks saying, oh, that's, that's just, you flip a switch and that's a choice. That's just not the case, so. Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we've been through our proclamations and presentations.
Before we do anything, do, would you like to approve their contract to provide those services?
I'm sorry, that's which item?
It's right there. Approved interim contract with Calaway to provide services, share for medication.
We will take care of that now, I'll make the motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you everyone for coming in. I know your time is valuable and, but it's really important to inform the community about what's going on. So thank you for making that possible.
Under resolutions, investments?
So moved.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Answers and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction, Lorain County Commissioners?
That would be a gentleman who's returning from some much deserved and earned time off. Almost didn't come back, oh my, County Administrator Jim Cordez, good morning.
Thank you. He's difficult and challenging. To say I missed you would be a lie.
Well, thank you.
I do have a number of personnel issues today to catch up what you want. Potential hires at the collection center, possibly 911. Of ongoing labor negotiations with United Steel Works America. We also received a notice to negotiate. Sheriff has received a notice to negotiate with one of his bargaining units. Also an update on the contracts with the steel workers and the treasurer's office and the orderer's office, which are pending, expired and pending. Hopefully, we'll be able to resolve those matters. I just want to brief you on that. We're still working on some real estate issues. And one pending legal matter. All those topics, allowing the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So to ask what's the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive sessions and we discuss those matters that have outlined. Thank you.
Approved my reading in the minutes September 11th?
Make the motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Adjust salary for Lorain Municipal Court employees effective August 5, 2019, which reflects the county's 2/5 share. Genzo Soto at Bayliff knew a bi-weekly rate of $818.01 and Bianca Villar, Bayliff knew bi-weekly rate of $833.01.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Men Resolution 19144, adopted in March 13, 2019, entering into participation agreement with CCAO Service Corporation regarding energy purchasing programs. Amendment is to reflect the addition of electricity program, program for five years.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Love to hear how much we're going to save.
Well, I don't know if we're going to save, I don't know if we're not going to save. I will tell you, just for, just for conversation, I had, when Mike Challenger was here, you know, I was thinking of trying to work with one or two companies that were in the region up here and possibly seeing if we could do some, do some RFPs and move in that direction. And I hadn't signed the contract with CCAO, which we had been in for a very, very long time. There's about 66 counties. We work with Palmer Energy on our gas program. We've been there for 20 years. And we've been in the electric consortium, I've got to say, 15 or 16 years, maybe more. But with, with his exiting and the success we've had with that program, I just don't, I just don't have the wherewithal to try to go it alone. And then we, we've, we've had success through CCAO and we don't need to go through all the bidding required. They, they, they do everything for all the counties. And there is, there is the power of, you know, large economics through the consortium. Bringing it back home, we, we, you know, would have been nice, I don't know whether it would have made a difference, but I know it would have been a heck of a lot of work for us to do here. So without, without him, you know, once he moved on, to be able to, you know, take, to take on that, that work. And we haven't replaced that position. I'm just not in any, any mood to, to try to take us out of that consortium right now. I just want to share that with you. Plus, we've, we've been very successful with that relationship for the long period of time.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Job and family authorized purchase service agreement with Lorain County Public Health, Alaria, to provide health-related and home health services for fiscal year 20 in the amount not to exceed $1,600 effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. And authorized director to execute on behalf of the board, prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Fraternal Healthcare Cleveland, Ohio, to provide home health services for fiscal year 20 in the amount $36,000 effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. And authorized director to execute on behalf of the board, prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
On item 15, Madam Clerk, we're going to hold up on that one. We wanted to do some additional research on that, item number 15.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Lorain County Safe Harbor Health District, Lorain, Ohio, to provide protective services to adults for fiscal year 20 in the amount not to exceed $190,2,500 effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. Authorized director to execute on behalf of the board, prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Authorized purchase servicing room with Neighborhood Alliance, Alaria, to provide emergency shelter for fiscal year 20 in the amount not to exceed $230,000 effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. And authorized director to execute on behalf of the board, prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Under sanitary engineer, approved interim agreement for sanitary lateral replacement with Aannis Houson, owner of property 23563 Parkwood Drive, Columbia Station, in the amount of $2,900, and this will be placed on the tax duplicate.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Engineer, entered an emergency contract with GeoStabilization International, Grand Junction, Colorado, Junction, Colorado, in the amount of $112,275 for repairs to the Pile South Amherst Road Slope Stabilization, Amherst Township, to be paid from the MVG Engineer Project Account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Enter into five-year lease purchase agreement with Akron Tractor for new Highland Power Start tractor equipped with two mowers in the amount of $89,351 to be paid from the MVGT account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Accept on behalf of Columbia Township Trustees, the improvements and enter into one-year maintenance guarantee for Hunting Meadows Subdivision Number Four, Off Snow Road Northwest Properties LLC, Rich Baron, the developer. County engineer inspected and approved construction of improvements and hereby accept on behalf of Columbia Township Trustees, Caribor Court and Antler Drive to become part of the township road system. Plotted the subdivision as recorded in volume 106, page 93, Lorraine County Records of Platts, for Caribor Court Township Road Number T2327 from Stag Thicket Lane to North Cul-de-sac, .34 mile, and Antler Drive Township Road T323, Whitetail Road to Caribor Court, .10 mile.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, approve an interim agreement with Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Ohio Pharmacy Services, Columbus, to provide certain goods and services, include pharmaceuticals and pharmacy services, effective retroactive to July 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, and contains a 60-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Public comment.
Public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Yes, come on up. Good to see you again. Good morning. You'll just state your name for the record. And we do have a three-minute time limit.
Yes, I, I'm usually under it.
Okay.
I'm an expert at that now. Teresa Shea, I'm not really, oh, 519 East Avenue. I'm not really going to speak the way I usually do. I was kind of shocked when I read the newspaper that you were upset about the fact that the mayor of Aliria was, she had found fun, a place, a way to get certain people in the jobs program, to get transportation. And I actually came here and discussed the actual people who were having problems in the winter. It makes me wonder if you ever listened to me, that were walking three and a half miles to go to the jobs works classes. And I spoke to you about that, and it was like, I don't think any of you ever heard me. And even before Commissioner Swita was, she was actually at the meeting where I learned about that particular thing. And that was right before you were appointed. And I, I may not have all the people that you just had talking about addiction, but I meet people all the time that are suffering, that need transportation. There's a woman who's probably younger than me, I'm pretty old, and she got, she, her Jeep blew up. So she lost her job in Avon. She's been working for the same place for many, many years, and now she has a little cart and a room she rents. This is a woman who is dynamic, who helped others and was dedicated to her job, you know? And now she's missing teeth and all this stuff. It's terrible. I do, I just can't get, seem to get you to understand the need for transportation. I see it every day. I see right along the junkies who ruined my neighborhood. I see the poor people. And I don't know what it is that gives you all this money for everything else, and you don't even hear me or care about the stories. I really wonder. I'm going to keep coming, but I, I don't like being treated like I'm invisible. So, maybe you could think about a few things that I'm saying. You, you are very concerned about the suicide rate. Do you have any idea how many people my age that are, that die that nobody knows about? When I used to go to the community meals, those are put on by churches, by the way, where they feed the poor, we would hear stories all the time about people who had killed themselves and they found them a couple days later. None of that was in the paper. None of that is a percentage that's kept track of. There, when I came today, I thought of the woman that lives, I call it the tower on East Avenue, was at one time senior citizen, but now low income. She pulled herself out of a wheelchair, out her window, and threw herself out the window. And if you don't think that's lack of transportation and poverty, those are the people I come here to talk to you about. You care about all these things, then care about that section that I come and talk. I'm only one person who can't talk that good. But to think that after all these years of me coming here, you, you didn't even listen to one little thing that I said was very disappointing. And you shouldn't be fighting with the mayor. You should be working with her. I'm not here to defend her. I'm here for the people that you aren't helping. So please, please, for once, listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to address the board this morning during public comment? Seeing none?
Mr. Cordez.
Welcome back, Mr. Cordez.
Well, just for the record, I was only gone for three days.
I know, I know. It seemed like forever for us, you know?
Going to the public comments this morning, I find it distasteful that people that don't know what goes on make comments and, and that are rather insultive about how we feel about things. I don't know how they think they can get inside people's heads and their hearts and understand, simply because things don't go the way they think they should go. They want to represent that people feel a certain way. I find that rather distasteful and intolerant and, and terrible. And those people should examine themselves for, for their own personality and for how they treat other people. We're easy targets up here to, to take shots. The whole thing with Aliria, if the, the information was truly understood, we did try to participate. For various reasons, it wasn't, wasn't workable. And I'm not satisfied with people taking cheap shots at us that we didn't try to do something. And I'm not gonna be tolerant of, intolerant people with lack of information and knowledge, making just outlandish statements. So you can take that one, and you can keep coming, and you keep making silly statements and things you don't know about. But you're not factually correct, and you're definitely not correct about how we feel about things. So don't tell us how we feel because you don't know. With that, I'll yield to counsel. I'm just a little angry this morning about that.
I need to, to jump back to item 11 for a moment.
No jumping back, Jerry. Okay.
I just, I just received an email that the Court of Appeals did grant a stay this morning.
Oh.
After the break, I'm gonna have to talk to the attorneys and check this out. But in all likelihood, we're gonna have to come back and rescind that action. Okay. Other than that, I do have several items of pending litigation.
Yeah, we read about one in the paper, so.
Yeah, on the radio, too.
Yeah, oh, good. Well, I wasn't gonna respond to Teresa's comment since Mr. Cordez did such a good job of that. But the only thing I would add was, would be the fact that she continues to come up and call people that are addicts junkies, which, if she would have been listening to our whole court dialogue here today, it is a brain disease. And I know sometimes people that are addicts do things that, you know, may not please you, and they certainly don't please me. But calling people names is not the way to get anybody's attention. So what I was gonna say was Wednesday, we all attended the Democrat Steak Fry at St. Peter's in Lorraine. It was a nice day, had a little bit of a, a storm come in, but no, I don't see anybody got wet. I actually walked to my car without my shoes on because I had slippery sandals on, and I kinda felt like a little kid walking through the puddles. And so, guy coming up behind me did the exact same thing. And so it was kinda fun. Yeah, it was kinda fun. Felt like a little kid walking back to my car. Thursday was a spaghetti dinner with Amanda Derry, who is the Aliria's law director. Great spaghetti. Friday, I was contacted by the CCAO to ask if I would be interested in being on the nominating committee. Julie Eman, who is our current president of the board, was kind enough to ask me to participate. So of course, I said yes. And we will be meeting this Friday after our regular board meeting. And we will also have a women's networking event celebrating women's suffrage, the Women's Suffrage Centennial. Yesterday, we had a very informative meeting with Grace Calucci from Noaka. My request to her is to look at the timing of the lights on Route 57. Ever since they removed, removed the clover lease, getting onto 57 from the side streets, very challenging, to say the least. And also about 10 years ago, you were able to get all the way through from Chestnut down to 113 with hitting all the light screens. So I'm hoping that they can figure out to get a better traffic flow by timing those lights. Grace also mentioned, which was very informative, to give an example of how things work when we take our taxes and we send it down to Columbus and when we get our money back, she mentioned Cuyahoga County's gas tax generates $20 million that goes down to Columbus. They get $2 million return, which is crazy. And that's kinda like how the local government fund and sales tax and everything, that's how it works, you know? We kinda, all the money goes down there and doesn't come back the way it should. So that was, I really enjoyed Grace being here. She's a great collaborator. And then last night was Ken Carney's fundraiser at Jackalope. So I've been eating good all week.
Wow.
End of my report.
Yeah. No, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, state, obviously, people can present whatever their views and thoughts are. But I do believe it's a misrepresentation of this board to think that we don't care about people. I think this board is very dedicated to social justice. We want to make sure that people are treated well and treated fairly. It's troublesome to, to hear people identified as druggies.
Junkies.
Junkies, rather. Because, you know, when you are close to the issue and you hear about the people who become addicted, these are very good people who become very addicted. And I've heard so many stories of the sweet granddaughter and, and just the great handsome grandson who just got in with the wrong people and, you know, and got hooked on drugs because that's the way their brain lit up. Their brain lit up.
Or they got a prescription.
Right. You know, the painkill, uh, pain killer pills that they were issued when they were student athletes, and their brain lit up and really liked it, and they just needed more and more and more. And same thing with alcoholism. Some people, you know, light up to, to beer and drinks, and other people don't. And so it is, it's a mental illness. And, you know, I just don't think it's healthy for the community for those individuals be described as, as junkies. But I also don't think it's fair for there to be a misrepresentation of this board, because I, I personally work closely with all my colleagues here, and I, and I can tell you, they have very big hearts and, are very saddened by what's going on in the community. And prior to my arrival, Laura Kokoski and Ted Kalo, very dedicated to putting transit in place, put questions before the voters multiple times. You know, the discussion needs to be held with people in the community, because this board has attempted on many occasions to improve transit and to find a funding, a funding source for it. You know, even as late as a couple years ago, where we were going to divide half of the, uh, uh, sales tax proposal for transit, and that went down in flames by an even larger margin. So it's not like efforts haven't been made. We want people to get to work. We stated last week about how we were asking for more information from the mayor so that we could make a decision. You know, when you start talking about getting people to work, absolutely, we want to get people to work. Absolutely. We want to lift people up and help them have a productive life for them and their families. But we need information to make decisions, and no information was ever provided. And that's where the difference of opinion came in, or the differences. We're always willing to work with, with the mayor. But, you know, if you call for something and you want us to make a decision, please provide us with the information so we can make one. But then don't misrepresent that for some reason we couldn't do it or we weren't interested, because that just wasn't true. So hopefully, all the facts now are on, on the table concerning that. But, you know, we live in a democracy, so everybody's free to express whatever their, their thoughts and their views are.
I was thinking about that $20 million that goes down to the state from Cuyahoga. So how much of that, how much does Lorraine contribute to that, Lorraine County? And if that money came back, we could then have money for transit. But because the state takes all our gas tax money and disperses it be, along, you know, other entities, and it doesn't come back to us, we don't have the money for transit.
It's, it's a little worse than that. It's, if you think the drain is only on the state level, it pales in comparison to the drain on the federal level. The, the, first, state of Ohio is near the bottom percentile in providing funding for transportation. They do not consider public transportation.
Priority.
A priority. Most of the progressive states, especially the larger ones, which Ohio fits into the larger category, provide significant amounts to match federal dollars for their local communities, whether it be through their ODOT or other grant-type arrangements, so that the local communities, along with local revenue streams, can match federal dollars, bring those dollars back to their communities, provide public transportation solutions. Ohio does a little bit of that, but it's, it's minuscule as compared to the more progressive, larger states where we should be. The, so we're missing those federal opportunities. I will tell you that over the last 10 or 15 years, we've probably missed 15 or 20 million just on federal transportation dollars that could have been ours.
Because we couldn't match.
That could have been, that we could match for local transportation solutions easily. I know because we get a future allocation look, and our allocations have become smaller and smaller as we have not been able to match, because they're usually three to five years out. As I've tried to explain to people, we have to release those allocations. They're more sized now to current operations, but at one time, we were turning back three, four million dollars a year because we couldn't match those allocations with local dollars or state dollars that should come back to us to, either to motor vehicle gas tax, et cetera. Because the, those dollars that generate from the state are considered local matched dollars to match the federal dollars. So those are opportunities that are lost. And so it'll begin with the state making transportation a priority. And then with that leverage, hopefully making, you know, somehow the taxpayer is making a local priority with leveraged dollars to bring the dollars that are leaving our community. And because if we don't get them, they're gonna go to other communities. And we've been, the, the Transportation Center was criticized because it's not being used, Transportation Center, but that was back in the Park Barrel days, when you had to find a project to get those dollars to come back to the community. We're, we're not seeing those earmarks again, but we are seeing capital requests starting to make a reemergence. And if you don't find capital projects or, you know, ED grants out of Washington, that money's gonna go to other communities. So you have to figure these things out to, to bring those dollars back. And Matt, you sit at, you're at Noaka, you go, I mean, I go to one meeting, you're at three or four of them sometimes when I'm there. And everybody's working on some way to bring those dollars back to their community. And, and so I, I know you're, you're on the governance, you're on the executive committee, you're on, so you know it better than I do.
Well, and I know that you've worked closely on the issue, and that's why I, I understand your, your frustration here this morning. Because, and I've had lots of conversations with you about transportation. I know how passionate you are and how you would love for the system to be so much better. And you've dedicated so much time and energy researching and turning over every seat cushion possible to try to see if there's any dollars there to help us with transit. And so I understand your, your frustration this morning and understandably so. Had the opportunity to attend the Flags of Honor Ceremony held in Sheffield Lake. And I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to attend, but it was, wow, just very impressive. And it was just one flag after another, after another, after another. But it's a strong remembrance of all the lives that have been lost in, in conflict. And I know my colleague was putting up some of those flags as well, too, along with some of the other individuals. And I guess the crazy part was, pretty much after all the flags got up, then the storm blew in. I had left just before the storm. And all I can tell you is I couldn't see the car in front of me. I could barely see the road when I was driving to the grocery store to have dinner with my wife and pick up some items. So, so it was.
Some of them brought vehicles that night. They went and switched out.
Right. But I understand that the tents quickly blew over and just, it was a really, well, I think we all know, it was around, what, 7:15 that evening? So, everybody pretty much knows the sheets of rain that came through. But Joe and Rosa Gee did an amazing job working on that, Mayor Bring, and, and all the veterans and all those affiliated with the Flags of Honor in Ohio, just a, a great program that whole weekend. Avon Veterans Memorial was there for the unveiling of their veterans memorial, along with my colleague. And, and quite an impressive site. If, if you know where the swimming pool area, if you know where the Avon post office is, if you just drive back there, you'll see a very well-designed memorial that they've put together and a nice turnout there. And we just can never do enough to remember all those who have served, their military families, and for those who are now currently, currently serving, and especially those who have been lost. Had the opportunity to speak with the Sheffield seniors. Since my two colleagues beat me to the punch there a couple weeks ago, everybody's to the punch there a couple of weeks ago, everybody said, "Where were you? Where were you?" And I said, "I don't remember being invited to come out to speak when Sharon and Lori came out." So anyhow, I got my turn. And so, but we had a nice conversation about government, and yes, everywhere we go, they brought up the issue of transit as well, too. You guys probably heard about it as well, and so we were educating them about how the whole process works. And it's true, if there's anybody that you should be really upset with, it should start with Columbus, because Columbus just will not change its mindset to bring more dollars back to these transit systems. They just will not do it. The transportation budget bill that's passed every two years is $7.5 billion. That's a B. And, you know, we continue to see this woefully low amount of money that comes back to various counties throughout Ohio. I think we rank in the categories with Mississippi and Alabama, the category you never want to be in. And is it 63 cents per individual, per cap that comes back? It's a very low number.
We're in the lowest percentiles.
Right. It's a very low number of what actually comes back to help support public transit in Ohio. And you try to change the mindset in Columbus, and like I said, there was one time on the floor, I was all excited because we had negotiated getting about another $7 million for transit systems in Ohio, and then they wanted to trade votes on some crazy bill, and we said no, and they took the $7 million off the table. And it was total nonsense, but the $7 million came off the table, and we were excited about that, out of $7.5 billion. So that's where the frustration lies, and so please know where the most important source is. We just have to operate within whatever money the taxpayers give us and whatever resources the state and the federal government give us. You know, we'd love to have money to cover everything and keep everybody happy, but that's not always possible. Enjoyed speaking with the Sheffield seniors, as I said, and then the Illyria Men's Senior Group the other day. Real interesting group over there, good group of guys, and every place I go, people have these coffee and donuts in the morning. I'm on this diet, so I can't enjoy the donuts, but at least enjoy the coffee. But it's just always good. We're getting out into the community. You may have noticed, we also have a newsletter that's gone out to the community. This board is very committed to being transparent and being accountable and letting you know what we do and how we do it, because we know that we work for you and we have to be accountable to you, and that's something that we take very seriously each and every day.
You want to tell them about this?
I was going to leave that to Sharon.
Okay.
Would you like to talk about that?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll start with congratulating the Lorain County Dems on a successful steak fry. They sold out twice during the steak fry, literally running back and forth to purchase more steaks. Friday afternoon, I did have an opportunity to go help and do some of the setup for the Flags of Honor. Joe and Rosa Gee did just a fabulous job bringing that to Sheffield Lake. The Patriot Riders were their members, from local unions, and the Flags of Honor team all participated, and it just moves boom, boom, boom. It is so quick. They have such a system for it, and very solemn to participate in, very solemn to watch the service that evening. I know that you could see the dark clouds coming, wondering, are they going to finish before those clouds are overhead? And they drop everything on top of us, and they did finish in the nick of time, but it was a beautiful ceremony. And then on Sunday, I was able to go over for the closing ceremony, and after which we took everything down in just the same kind of order that they put it all up, and within about an hour and a half, the field was empty again.
Wow, that's amazing.
Friday night was interesting, though. I know all the local high school football games were moved up an hour because of the storms, and most of them were rained out by halftime. And keep our attention to those in eastern Cuyahoga who still don't have power. So we were fortunate. We're still kind of moving on normal, and they're still suffering from the storms.
Lights were flickering, though.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, they flickered, but they didn't go out. Thank God.
And Matt's correct. Driving home, I was on 90, and I've never seen so many vehicles that have pulled off the road because of the rain and the blinding force of that storm. So they cleared the way for me.
Maybe they knew you were behind them. I don't know.
So Avon Memorial, yes, it was a beautiful memorial they unveiled, and congratulations to Carlisle Township on the groundbreaking of their veterans memorial that they're starting. The IAV had their annual festival, and of course, I'm Italian, and anything with Italian food is great. Lorain County Community Senior, or the Lorain Community Senior Center had their ice cream social. Looked like a little bit of a soft attendance, but I was only there briefly, but there was so much going on this weekend. Saturday evening, I was able to pass through Kenny Velez's memorial dinner. They had been golfing all day, they were all in true spirits by the time I got there. I'll leave it with that. The Habitat for Humanity had a steak fry out at Paper Moon. That was a nice event, as well as then right over at Mattis was the FOPA annual fundraiser, and that one's always a lot of fun. They have, they really outdo themselves with their baskets, and it was well-attended, lots of music, you couldn't talk much, it was pretty loud. And then later that evening was the, well, all evening, was the Historical Society Night. It was the Night of Monte Carlo over in the new shipyard hall. I didn't make it back in time, but looked like it was quite a nice event, so next year, that may be one to squeeze in. Sunday was Harvest of the Arts and Crafts Show in Wellington, and then again, the closing ceremony of Flags of Honor. I do appreciate Commissioner Kokowski asking Noacka to review Route 57 in our meeting yesterday, because we do need greater ease of motion, and the numbers were startling how impacting a timing system on the lights can make. So that was an eye-opener for me. We also are, you've given me a news press release here that I want to take a look. I think we just basically approved how they're going to use some of that grant money for the Main Street Wellington. I was at the Main Street Wellington Award Night, and it was a national honor. It was incredible. They had to apply for it, their Main Street applied for the grant, they won, it was in three rounds. And so in the third round, they were the winner. They won $10,000, so I can't give a better update on this because I'm not quite sure what's in that one. Finally, just closing, a couple of things on the transportation issue. I do have to speak up. When I hear words like, "Do you ever listen?", and "How do I get you to understand?", I'll let you know, I'm very active in a lot of the meetings for transportation, so I don't need somebody to ask me to listen or get me to understand. I do understand. I understand the challenge of it, the problem of it. It's not just about getting people to jobs and to work, it's about helping seniors stay in their homes longer. It's about easing that sandwiched generation from the problems they face. So we get it. We, everybody's talked it nauseam about what the problems are. In this last go-round, I was in a meeting, and I was assured that the city of Illyria was going to work with us, that they would cooperate, and we would come up with a joint venture. It wasn't going to be a great big one. It had to be a system already in place. It was a modest grant, but by my urging and assuring my colleagues that, yes, they'll work with us, we found out in short order, we were kind of pitched to the side real quickly. And so it's not an argument, it's just a matter of fact, that we were ready and willing to work on that project, and we're unable to do so. And I'll continue to look for methods and solutions, but we're working within our own restraints and capabilities. That said, the GM strike weighs heavily. I'm from a union family, and we all know that the anxiety of being a strike target, what it means. Little fact that in this particular strike, I think, strike, I believe that the workers may have a little bit of leverage. GM is losing $50 million a day. That take care of transportation. The workers are asking for recession era concessions that had been returned during the recession in an attempt to ease the demise of GM, and now GM's coming off their most profitable decade in history. They're also asking for jobs to be returned back from Mexico to the U.S. So like so many, mine was a union household, the thing we have to remember is that in a strike, nobody wins. The families lose, our community loses, and the local economy suffers from it. So I hope they can find a quick resolution. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple releases that we'll provide to the media. Just found one here that needs a slight revision to it, but this one is dealing with the Wellington Downtown CDBG Grant. We just want to inform everybody, the Board of Commissioners started working with the Village of Wellington, put together a CDBG Target of Opportunity Grant application. Now, that grant would focus on renovating three buildings in the Village's Central Business District. The county will be applying for $250,000, which would leverage an additional $235,000 in private funds. Building owners are working with contractors and architects and have secured estimates for improvements, utilizing Davis Bacon wages and taking local design review regulations into consideration. In case you're curious, the proposed buildings to receive the grant would be 107 Willard Memorial Square, 113 East Herrick, 111 East Herrick, and collectively, all the buildings are considered historic. They were built in the 1800s. They'll need significant code facade and structural improvements to make them ready for reuse. All three buildings have identified a potential tenant once improvements have taken place, so we'll have these available for the media after we make a slight revision or two.
Yeah, mindful that we also partnered with Main Street last week.
Right.
And the Village on an opportunity to grant to Main Street. I was pleased that Main Street had requested $3,000 from the board, and I challenged the Village to share that $3,000 responsibility and bring $1,500 to the table, and we would bring $1,500 to the table, which they did. So I'm very pleased that they saw a great opportunity to partner with their Main Street program and the county commissioners. They also received some awards for their Main Street program this year, not to mention that they're a two-time winner of the best wings in Lorain County.
Right. It's the year in Wellington.
It's the year in Wellington. Somehow they don't have any cheese, but they're the cheese capital.
They probably have some cheese.
But, again, we're working on our, our, the very old community, a very proud community. We've done a lot of work in Amherst, and we're able to get grants there. We've done some work in Oberlin, but we're down in Wellington trying to work down there right now. They have some momentum, so it's time to try to capitalize upon that. We're always looking for willing partners, and right now, there's a lot of willing partners that are working very hard in Wellington, and we're only part of that team. Because it takes a team to make it work, so it's, and we'll be moving in other communities as we can build, we can build a collaborative there, too. So thank you for your support on this, Commissioners, because without it, we don't get to play.
On that one as well, too.
For correspondence?
I would move that the reading be waived.
Second? Ms. Lindy.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Okay, seeing no other business at this time, I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the county administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
I'll second. Ms. Lindy.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.